October fifteenth, regular council meeting is six thirty P M. And with that, I'll ask everyone to please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Okay Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are present.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And I just want to do a check with everyone here. Are you able to hear me clearly because I'm wearing my mask?
Yes.
I'm just.
I'm clear.
I just wanted to share with everyone that we are going through another transition period where some of the guidelines that were being followed or in place for conducting meetings are in the process of being reviewed or modified. But I just wanted to reinforce to our residents that nothing's been cured. We still need to be vigilant and I want to therefore, I don't want to say, I want to send a positive message that I'm going to try to conduct meetings even wearing my mask for that purpose is to send that that indication that we still need to be vigilant. So with that, we will forward. As you know, as we've been operating under the COVID nineteen model in terms of our meetings, I have some information I am to share with you on how the meetings being conducted. This evening applicants who will be making presentations will be muted by our staff until the agenda item they will be presenting on comes up. Once called, the applicant will be unmuted to make their presentation and answer any questions that the council. When your item is complete or rather when it's voted on, then you may feel free to leave the meeting if you wish to do so. Regarding public comments, we will be taking public comments on each agenda item as it comes up. Once I ask for public comment on a specific item, please click, raise your hand in your go to webinar webinar in order to make public comment. Before being individually identified, all members of the public will be muted. The meeting organizer will announce the speaker by stating their name and unmute their audio to allow three minutes of comment. When called, please state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comments, speaking clearly as possible into your device during your allotted time. Couple other notes I want to share is please ensure that all background noise is eliminated to the extent possible. When speaking, please be sure to identify yourself, as I said, so that we know who is speaking. And please do not use the chat function on the go to webinar as that function will not be monitored during the meeting. As a reminder, this meeting can be viewed live on Comcast local channel eighteen or streamed at royalpalmbeach.com/YouTube on our website. With that, we're going to proceed with our reports. Well, before we do that, I want to take a moment to recognize an individual who has many, many years into this community, working as an EMS with fire rescue. Okay. His name is EMS Captain George Springhorn. Now George has been with the village for thirty-five years. He has thirty-five years of experience in the fire service. Thirty-two of those years have been serving the citizens of Royal Palm Beach. It's interesting how he accomplished this. He was hired by Royal Palm Beach Fire Department in February nineteen eighty-eight as a firefighter paramedic. He was promoted to driver engineer in nineteen ninety-four. When the village merged their fire department with the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue in nineteen ninety-nine, George continued working locally at Station twenty-nine until he was promoted to lieutenant in the year of two thousand and three. That was a good year, by the way. When he was assigned, when he was assigned to Station twenty-seven in Wellington, he returned to Station twenty-eight in Royal Palm the next year and stayed there until he was promoted again to EMS captain this time in the year of two thousand and seven. After serving six years in Lake Worth, he returned to Royal Palm Beach where he has been working as an EMS captain for Battalion Two, the eighth shift. George recently received the EMS Officer of the Year Award for the year two thousand and nineteen, which unfortunately was delayed by the COVID crisis. But we wanted to acknowledge him this evening and congratulate him on achieving that award and congratulate him on his outstanding service to the village of Royal Palm Beach. George, we applaud you. Thank you so much for your service. The only other report I have this evening is it is the third Thursday of the month and we did have this morning the Transportation Planning Agency meeting. There was nothing that was really of significance that occurred at the meeting other than we did select a new vice chair. Vice Mayor Win Ross from Palm Beach County Commissioners, what County Commissioners is in that role. And we did something a little interesting today. We got a request from F D O T to review a plan they had for interchange of Wilbright of I ninety-five. And the request that was made for the resolution to approve this plan was modified after some somewhat significant discussion and presentation from our staff on the T P A on some things that we'd like to see included in this plan, which we provided as a making a more safer interchange for people who are either on bikes or walking pedestrians to navigate this interchange. So we did pass the resolution with those recommended modifications and we wait to see F D O T's response to that, to that result. With that, Diane, why don't we start with you?
She's muted. How about on screen? Top right hand corner?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, cool.
Sorry about that. The issues forum that meets quarterly is going to meet on November fourth. We were originally going to meet on October twenty-ninth, but that is read for the record. I'm going to let Jeff talk about that. And we have two items on the agenda, digital, disaster resiliency and housing study in the housing plan. So that group, as you know, meets quarterly and we have just a couple of issues that we will talk about. And I'm so glad that we recognized EMS captain, Mr. Springhorn. He deserved it, so thank you for that. And that's all I have.
Good evening, everyone. The reaper of the record activity began several weeks ago with what was a virtual version of a mayor's literacy luncheon. The food wasn't that great. It was whatever was been reached. But the book looks like it's going to be a very, very enjoyable book to read. It's called Evelyn Del Rey is Moving Away. And I think everybody's got their copy of the book. And as Jan just said, we, we're going to be reading as part of a nationwide activity on October the twenty-ninth. The details are still being worked out. I think Chris Wax has done a really great job of not only engaging with the literacy coalition to make the arrangements with the school, but also to kind of take the initiative on our own to get us connected with schools again this year. Last year, we, we got close to the top for recognition among the Palm Beach County cities that participate in Reaper Record. We wound it with honorable mention. We read to more than seven hundred students and I think we had more than twenty-some meter readers, if you will. So hopefully we'll be able to do as well this year. They've added a feature since it's going to be probably a virtual activity and suggested that not just the numbers that should be considered, but also, as they put it, the quality, which is being creative in how you come across and how you present the book to the student. So they gave us some suggestions and that type of thing, and I think that the information is valuable. It'll be, it'll be interesting to see how this plays out. I think we're all getting better and better at doing the virtual thing, even if we don't particularly prefer it to in person. But it is what it is at this particular point in time. Could be a good book and it should be a lot of fun reading to the kids, even if we have to do it virtually. Speaking of education, we had our Education Advisory Board meeting for October, October the fifth. Majority of board members were physically in here and everyone else connected virtually. We put the spotlight on Royal Palm Beach Elementary, which is notoriously known as the happiest place on earth. And they're not allowing this virtual confinement, if you will, to get in the way of that happiness. They are, of course, taking appropriate measures to keep everybody safe with COVID protection, C D C guidelines and that type of stuff. And they're being creative in using hall prints to keep kids six feet apart. They've got cones in the hallway so that the kids will stay separated around in the hallways. They have about half of the students in the classroom and about half online right now. And they are down in total student count from last year. They had six hundred and sixty-eight students this year enrolled at Royal Palm Elementary, seven hundred and fifteen last year. Principal Tracy Gallagher offered her ideas about, well, her knowledge of where the majority of that difference occurs, and it is in the kindergarten. Kindergarten classes are down substantially. What was interesting was I heard another report on that today and it confirmed, and that seems to be true throughout the county, that the kindergarten count is down. And so folks who have taken a look at this, talked to some of the parents, have come away with the feeling that parents want to just wait until we're past this whole thing since kindergarten is optional and hopefully be able to put their kids into school full time next year on campus. So that's pretty much what's going on from an education advisory board point of view. Of course, sports are really important at high school especially, but all, all grades. And we've got an interesting variation on the theme of a high school football season going on this year. A total of six games followed up by a whole like matchup game with a team from either Broward or Miami Dade. Now, what's really interesting is there are only three places in Palm Beach County where the games are going to be played. They all happen to be Astro Turf Field so that they will survive the large amount of, larger amount of games being played both on Friday nights and Saturday, I think. And our first game, Royal Palm Beach High School against Wellington High School, will be played at Wellington, which is one of the three sites. So it'll be an interesting year, no doubt about it. Kids are excited about being able to get back to sports and kind of exciting for the rest of us.
So is that their version of a bubble?
You know, that word was never used. I don't know if anybody thinks about that at all in this particular. They have, of course, been very careful. In fact, they go over the extremes of not having more than nine players and a coach in any one group doing any of the preparatory exercises and I think during the first couple of weeks. So they're, they're watching this very closely and they're trying to make the most of it.
It's a challenge, definitely.
It really is. One other thing I wanted to mention was the census is supposed to end, if I've got this right, I could try to keep up with the screen port on this. It's supposed to end tonight at midnight. And, and I believe that also includes all field work. Well, as it turns out, as it turns out, we entered a little bit of a competition among the top or ten largest cities of Palm Beach County. We have consistently, consistently in the lead and continues to be in the lead with a percentage of seventy-six point three percent of residents self-reporting on October the seventh. So between then and now, we may see an even larger percentage coming out of that. But I don't remember exactly what the winner gets, but I know that everybody else gets nothing. So I'm not sure how that's going to play out. I think there's supposed to be a conference call on Monday to congratulate.
I thought there was a large sum of money paid to the winning council.
I can offer that.
Sixteen hundred per person.
Sixteen hundred per person.
Sixteen hundred per person.
How'd you come up with that number?
From the phone.
That really goes to the real. Exactly. And that's what, that's what it's all about, you know? So in any case, we, we did, we did really well and I'd like to give credit to the intern who put together our campaign, whose name is Maria Landron. And of course, the combination of the staff, working with her, getting out into the community, encouraging people to self-report has made a huge difference. I mean, we, we are substantially ahead of the others at this particular point in time. So congratulations to the village and especially to our intern.
And congratulations to our citizens for the funding.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah. Yesterday I was actually fortunate to be one of the chosen few to appear for jury duty yesterday. And it was an interesting endeavor because, you know, the times being what they are. And, you know, from my personal subjective observations, I'd really like to thank the clerk of the courts and the chief judge for, you know, really thinking things out and making sure everything was distanced, that there was sanitizer and everyone had to wear masks. And it, it made things go a little bit longer probably than it needed to, but on the side of safety, I, I thought, you know, from a personal juror perspective, I don't know how they could have done any better. So if anyone, I don't know when they're going to do it again, but if anyone gets a summons, from my perspective, I don't, I don't think there was much of a fear of going for jury service and worrying about the COVID angle of it. And following that, I mean, we've, we've got an election coming up, I think, before the next time we meet. I would encourage everyone to go out and vote, and I believe early voting starts on Monday.
I think it started, right? I thought it started today. Does that start Monday?
It starts Monday. So go out and be heard. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We had a Recreation Advisory Board meeting this past month. There was a presentation from the village engineer on the surtax expenses. And along with that came an update on Commons Park access, bicycle pedestrian pathways throughout the village, road resurfacing project. And all of that report can be found on our website, royalpalmbeach.com. Also, we talked about security in six parks are going up. There's also a passenger tram that we will have to take residents from or attendees at Commons Park from the entrance of Commons Park over to the Great Lawn. So it's one of those little trams that they have at the theme parks that you get in the carts and it'll drive you around. So that's really neat just because of the distance between there. There will be playground fencing going up around the playscapes of Todd Robner Park. That baseball is currently being played with C D C guidelines in mind. There is no regular soccer season. They're going to wait till spring, but there is travel soccer and there will not be flag football this season. All through October, there have been food trucks, movies, concerts and everything. So Friday night at Commons Park, we have tomorrow is a movie troll, troll, I can't say it. Troll's World Tour. And then the twenty-third is a concert. And on the thirtieth, we are doing a concert as well. And then on the thirty-first for Halloween, there'll be the food trucks and movie, The Addams Family. So all that's over Commons Park. And then Saturdays, they are still doing the Green Market from nine to one. Also, we talked about that there will be, the Young at Heart will not be meeting for lunches this year. They are starting to open up the playgrounds and splash pads throughout the park. And rentals will be moved into phase three so we can start renting the, the gazebo areas. And then in addition, we have a Royal Palm Beach app that is available on Apple or Android and it is R P B Village Support. So you can download the app and on there you can have access to everything if you need to report something, if you need update on anything, if you need to look anything up, if you need to contact the staff. So that's R P B Village Support is the app. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Selena. Ray, before you give your report, can we, the booth, can we, can you hear me? Can we check to see if Channel eighteen is streaming properly? It is? Okay. All right, I'm sorry.
I have no report, Mayor. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Keith, how are you?
I'm well, sir. How are you?
Okay.
Much like the village manager, I have nothing to report unless you have any questions.
It's just what you know or don't know about where we're going to be going, going forward with the ordinances or emergency acts that were in place that modify our options for meeting.
It, it seems as though the governor's office has hinted that after the end of October, that ability to conduct virtual meetings, that that may not be extended. But, you know, the impact on us shouldn't be that bad because you're already meeting in person. And that, those orders, most notably, allow local governments to meet without being in a particular location. So you're already meeting in person. So even if that goes away, my view is you can continue to run your meetings even with the public being able to dial in remotely and continue as we're doing now.
All right, I just wanted to hear that and I wanted to have that kind of honor record because, yeah, the, the essence of the, of the rule of what we call the quorum for the elected officials in this meeting. But what's important is that if we can continue, we will continue to provide the meetings via virtually so that citizens are not compelled to feel like they have to physically come here and, and concerns with them risking themselves or exposing themselves. They can still participate, provide public comment, provide input. So that's very important that we're, so thank you. Okay, that will conclude our reports this evening. At this time, is there anyone, Diane, has anyone submitted petitions for the council?
No report, no petitions tonight.
No petition, okay. Then I'm closing the floor on accepting petitions. In terms of statements from the public, Diane, do we have any prior public requests on items not on the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Do we have anyone out there who would like to comment on items not on the agenda?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay. With that then, public comments on non-agenda items, which takes us to our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, approval of the amendment to the council final public budget hearing of September seventeenth, twenty twenty, and council regular meeting of September seventeenth, twenty twenty. Two, approval and authorization to renew annual software licensing and software maintenance support with Superior and Public Sector Incorporated in the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars. Three, approval to purchase and have installed a twenty-eight foot hexagon shaped pavilion in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars by piggybacking St. John's Term Contract, number twenty dash forty-six, from Playmore Recreational Products and Services. This project, P R one nine one seven, is budgeted in account number three oh three, seven two zero zero, seven two six three eight two. Or approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into agreement with Broadcast Systems Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of security cameras in Commons Park by Piggybacks G S A contract, G S O, seven F, one seven, three G A. Five, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the first addendum to lease agreement for parking facilities in order to extend the lease agreement for the first renewal period ending September tenth, twenty twenty-four. Six, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund three oh three in the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars from Recreation Center Modifications, P R one nine two three, to Park Security Cameras, P R two zero zero three. Seven, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund one oh one in the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of three hundred thousand dollars from undesignated fund balance, three nine nine zero one zero zero to Commons Park Lot Expansion, P R one six zero two. Eight, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund three oh two in the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of seven hundred thousand dollars from undesignated fund balance, three nine nine zero one zero zero to Commons Parking Lot and Pathway Expansion, P R two one one three. And nine, approval of the bidding board in the amount of one million three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and authorization for the village manager to execute a contract with the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the Royal Palm Beach Commons Parking Lot and Pathway Expansion Projects, P R one six zero two, and P R two one one three to Amazon Construction, L L C.
Thank you, Diane. Do we have any, anyone who says they require comments on the consent agenda?
No, Mayor, we don't.
Is anyone out there, Ray, who wants to comment on the consent agenda?
We do not have anybody with their hand raised, Mayor.
Okay, so I'm closing public comment on the consent agenda, opening up the comments for members on council. I would just like to ask if we could pull, set it down to item number three?
I actually have a few I'd like to pull.
What, okay, what other ones?
I'd like to pull four, six, seven, eight, and nine, just because they all go together.
Okay. So that leaves us with. All right, so can I get, unless there's anyone else who wants to comment or pull an item? I'd like a motion to approve consenting items one, two, five?
That's it.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on our favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, we have no opposed, Diane. Please let the record show that consenting items one, two, and three have been approved.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
One, two, and five have been approved. And I'm going to let you go first, Selena, since you have them both ahead of you.
Sorry, they, they all go together, so don't worry. And actually, the village manager can do it. But just because we've had, over the last couple of years, residents come through and ask regarding security cameras. So that was item number four. And six, I believe, and then also because then we've also had residents regarding the paving of the grass lot at the dog park at Commons Park, and that, those are items seven, eight, and nine. So if you could just give a quick little update on those, Mr. Manager, please.
Okay. Number four is the installation of security cameras at Commons Park. And that will be scattered throughout the park in our key areas, getting parking lots, getting common areas in the, in the largest gathering areas. So that would pretty much get the whole park out there. It'll get the, over by the driving range, the golf balls.
It was just, yeah, it was just clarification because we've had several who've asked about it. And then seven, eight, nine are just all the same about the parking, paving.
Seven, eight, and nine, seven and eight are a budget adjustment to make nine happen. And the reason it's two different budget adjustments is there's two different funds. One of them is our, our recreation fund that we, is a charge to developers in lieu of dedicating land. They can, they can pay a fee and we can use that for park improvements. Eight is a budget adjustment in the sales tax fund. What the projects are is there's three separate projects at Commons Park. Two of them are parking lots and the third one is a widening of the pathway around the, on the south side of the park, specifically where we had a twelve-foot path and then when we. when we, we got to certain areas, we split it into two six-foot paths. Those two six-foot paths really didn't work well for our five K. We do have a certified five K route out there. That required everybody to narrow down from the twelve-foot wide pathway to a six-foot wide pathway. So we're taking those areas where they were narrowing down to six feet, making it twelve feet all the way around to the five K certified path. The other two areas are parking lots. So our most popular parking lot is obviously the first one you come into right before the sporting center. It holds maybe about twenty, twenty-five cars. That grass lot next to it is one of the next most popular areas of the park. Under our grass parking ordinance, one of the rules to have a grass parking lot is that grass can actually grow, and you don't have that frequent of parking that it kills the grass. But clearly, that's not the case there. So we are paving that parking lot and paving an area for the people that go to the dog park. And that's one section. The other part is on the other side of the, of the sporting center, over there by just kind of east of the, the driving range, in that overflow area. And if you remember in the budget, we had added two corporate pavilions. So a couple of things we're doing here. One, we're adding some paved parking that will be close to those corporate pavilions. And the other thing, we're adding a little bit more paved parking and some drive aisle, paved drive aisles for the grass parking over in that area. We think this is a good time to do that. I will, I will tell you that when we originally conceived these, these parking lots, they got a lot bigger than the original scope of services, and that's why the, the need for the budget adjustments. We do feel that, that it's a very good bid, it was a very competitive bid. We had five bidders that were, that were within fifteen, ten percent of each other, which is a great bid. So we recommend that we move forward with this work and, and approve it.
Thank you. That was a good one.
All right. Any other questions, any other questions from members on council on any of those items that we discussed? No? All right. The reason why I requested that we pull agenda consent agenda item three is Lou, Lou, are you out there?
I gotta unmute him. He's out there. Now Lou is sub muted, so Lou will have to unmute himself.
I'm here.
How you doing, Lou?
I'm doing fine. How about you?
We're doing fine. Can you enlighten us a little bit more about what this project is for the, the...
If you, yeah, if, if you're familiar with...
The hexagon?
If you're familiar with Bob Marcello Park, Field Number Four, just outside the outfield, we have two new playscapes. And this, this pavilion will kind of finish off that, this pavilion will go between the two playscapes. This way, when, when people are there with their kids or they want to have a, an outing, it'll be large enough, you can have a teen picnic out there if you want, or two families can be out there with their kids at either one of the playgrounds. This, this pretty much finishes off that area.
Is that, which field is that? That's not Field Five, right? It's...
No, I feel Field Four.
Field Four? Okay, okay.
Right underneath the, right underneath the flag.
That'll, I think, I think the kids will really get a kick out of this. That's great. Okay. Any other questions for Lou?
I, I would just say that's, it's a great idea, Lou. I know, you know, a lot of times when I would bring Riley over to play baseball games, and then, of course, Christina didn't want to sit around and do that and have to take her to the, to the park to run around, and, you know, this, this would be a great accommodation for, you know, people in that situation where, you know, the parents can actually sit under there, or, as you said, it's a lot bigger than just a few people, so good, good job.
Okay. So I don't know how many years ago it was, we, we used to have a little play area for the kids when we first came into the park, up at the parking lot, and we had long-term plans of doing something bigger and better, and when we took that down, boy, we got a lot of feedback.
The parents?
So I'm glad we're continuing to fulfill our promise that we were gonna do something much better than what that was. I think this would be great. Thank you, Lou.
Okay.
All right. No, no other questions on the items that were pulled. I'll look for a motion for consent agenda item three, four, six, seven, eight, and nine.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Favorite motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's no opposed? Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda items three, four, five, I'm sorry, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine was approved.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
All right. We'll move on to our regular agenda. Agenda item R one is a public hearing for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number one zero zero six, amending chapter seventeen, offenses and miscellaneous provisions to add a new section, seventeen dash fifteen, Palm Beach County Solicitation Distribution of Public Road Ordinance, in order for the village to, to elect for said ordinance to apply to all public open in the village boundaries that are open to motor vehicle traffic. Ray, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, this is an ordinance to establish regulations concerning the solicitation, distribution, and sale of any merchandise, goods, property, or services, and the solicitation of charitable, for charitable purposes on public roads. This will prohibit that act on, on our roadways. It is consistent with the county ordinance and will be enforced by the Palm Beach County Sheriff.
Okay. Diane, do we have any prior public comments submitted to us?
No, Mayor.
Ray, is there anyone out there who would like to comment on this agenda item?
There are no hands raised.
Mayor, if I could just read the full title for the record, so we're...
Please do, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance one oh six, ordinance of the village council, village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, many chapter seventeen, offenses miscellaneous provisions, article one in general, to add a new section seventeen dash fifteen, Palm Beach County Solicitation Distribution of Public Roads Ordinance, in order for the village of Royal Palm Beach to elect for said ordinance to apply to all public roads within the village's boundaries that are open for motor vehicle traffic. Further providing that section seventeen sixteen through twenty shall be reserved for future purposes. Further providing that each and every other section, subsection in chapter seventeen shall remain full force and effective previously adopted, providing countless clause severability clause thirty to codify effective date for other purposes.
Okay. Did no comments from members on council? I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item number one. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that the second reading for regular agenda item number one was approved five zero.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
Agenda item R two is a public hearing for a first reading and approval of ordinance number one zero zero seven, ending chapter seventeen, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, to add a new section to the village parks, natural areas, trespass ordinance, provided for a short title, providing for definitions including criteria on when a trespass notice may be issued, and providing for authorization to issue trespass notices, providing for appeal of trespass notices. You're on, Ray.
So yes, this is gonna be known as our trespass ordinance, and, and what it does is it gives a warning to people for trespassing, that the sheriffs, that our deputies will have the authority to enforce it under a first trespass notice, they will be not allowed on the public property for a year. A second trespass notice, up to five years, prohibited from being on the property, and then a third time would be up to ten years. There is an appeal process to the magistrate, and there is a, a process set out for that. There, there also is a opportunity if people want to be on that public property that they were not allowed to be on for purposes of their First Amendment rights, they can get permission from the village to do that for that period of time. So this is, so this is an ordinance to assist us in enforcing trespassing if needed, or when needed.
Okay. Before we take comments from the council, Diane, do we have any prior requests from the public on this, public comments on agenda item R two?
No, Mayor.
Ray, do we have anyone with their hand raised who'd like to comment on agenda item R two?
No, we do not.
All right. This is, since this is the first reading, going once, going twice?
One.
Three times. All right. I'm closing public comment agenda item R two, and we're open for comments from the council.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to, I, I guess, touch base or confirm with Keith, because basically, when I've dealt with trespassing, it's been, you know, basically the ordinances, and it's, okay, you've got a convenience store, someone won't leave the convenience store, they tell them to go, they won't go, and then they have to call the police, the police show up, and then give them the trespass ordinance. So this presumably works the same way. I mean, there, i- is it instituted normally? It, it doesn't necessarily have to be because we, the village, are the ones who are the property owners. But is, is that the way it normally works out, Keith?
Basically, but in this case, the trigger mechanism is if somebody commits any of the enumerated applicable local law violations or state law violations on public property. So if you, and you'll see on page two and three of the ordinance, there's a whole list of criminal offenses, and if somebody commits one of those on, on village property, that would trigger either a warning for trespass or, depending on the circumstances, you know, the first offense for a one-year ban and, and so forth. So the trigger in this case is not, we don't want the person on our property, it's, they've, they've committed an offense, a criminal offense on our property. And the way the appeal process works is then, if, if that was appealed, the village would have the burden to establish by clear convincing evidence that the criminal offense did occur.
Okay. Thank you.
And the other comments in council? If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion approved, regular agenda item two.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that, uh, regular agenda item number two, for first reading, was approved five zero.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
Regular agenda item R three is also a public hearing for first reading, the approval of application two zero dash seven two, in ordinance number one zero zero eight, application by Nelson Sada regarding a zoning text amendment to chapter twenty-six of the village zoning code, to add a definition for the term birthing center and allow birthing centers as a special exception uses in the general, uh, commercial zoning district. And we're gonna have a presentation from Mr. Nelson, uh, from Mr. Sada, right?
Bradford will.
Bradford's got it.
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll do that first if I can get the ability to share my screen.
Hang on a second. There, I'm sorry. Okay. You have it there, Bradford? There you go.
Can everybody see my screen? Very good.
Yes. He didn't read it.
Uh, the applicant is... The applicant is proposing an amendment to the village's zoning code at chapter twenty-six to allow birthing centers as special exception use in the general commercial zoning district within the village. The, the text will be adding a term for birthing center to twenty-six twenty-two and adding bir- birthing centers to the list of special exception uses in the general commercial zoning district. Right now, I'll pull up the definition just to kind of hit the high points. Care provided in a birthing center shall not be provided by, or shall be provided by, a licensed physician, or certified nurse midwife, or licensed midwife. Certain services shall be limited to those normally performed or uncomplicated childbirth. Labor shall not be inhibited, stimulated, augmented, or chemical agents in the first or second stage of labor. Systemic anesthesia may be administered in local anesthesia for dental block and es-tesiotomy repair, a form. Patient shall not remain in the facility in excess of twenty-four hours, and hospitals are excluded from the definition of a birthing center. The local planning agency considered this application and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Staff is recommending approval of this application. With that being said, I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor, and give the screen back to Ray.
Okay. Thanks for that presentation, Bradford. Is the applicant available to make comments?
I do not have the applicant on here to make any comments.
Okay. Let's see, we have any comments from the public, Diane? Were any prior comments submitted?
No, Mayor. No comments.
Ray, is there anyone out there who would like to comment from the public on this agenda item?
There's nobody with their hand up, Mayor.
Okay. This is the first reading, going once, going twice, three times. I'm closing public comment agenda item R three, and open for comments from members on council.
I, I just had a question. I don't know Bradford if he can answer this or not, but one of the things it said in there is that, uh, somebody's not permitted to be there for more than twenty-four hours?
That's correct.
So in the event that somebody does need to stay a second day, are they then transported to the hospital?
I, I would think that, yes. Either if they're in a state where, and I think that it's, it's not completely uncommon for there to be someone arriving at a place like this or at a hospital, and it be, for lack of a better term, a false alarm sent home, but if they are in active labor and it does last for more than twenty-four hours, what we were being told is that they would be transported to the, to the nearest hospital or a hospital of their choice, because at that point in time, it doesn't meet their, the types of birth that they are going to handle at these locations.
And are these just natural births and not cesareans, or is that determined at that time?
There will, there, they will not be provide, they will not be conducting surgical, um, services that, and that would be a cesarean, and that would be performed at a hospital.
So if the mother, the expecting mother gets there and they decide that cesarean is needed, they will transport them, or if the mother delivers and needs to stay for two days, they will then transport them the second day, correct?
Right. Within the definition that they have provided to us, that they will be providing, surgical services shall be limited to those normally performed or uncomplicated childbirth, such as episiotomy and repair, shall not include operative obstetric, stents, or cesarean sections. And so that, that is part of the definition, so no, they would not be, I'm doing C-sections here, and if somebody is remaining for more than twenty-four hours, that would not be a uncomplicated childbirth. That would be more of the complicated types.
Okay. Just sometimes you don't know till you're actually there and in the midst of the act. So that's why I was, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bradford, do you have any ideas for why the applicant wasn't available this evening?
No, sir. And I touched base with Minnie today, and, you know, she was gonna pass on the information to Keith. We were in contact with him today. We were in contact with him yesterday. We've been in contact with this individual is, uh, very frequently, and, uh, I don't know why. No, sir.
Okay. Clearly, do you have...
May I ask Bradford one question? Bradford, I know the name you gave me was in Nelson. There is a Jamie Chancellor on, as an attendee, but they did, they did not answer my question whether they wish to speak on this item. It's, is the Jamie Chancellor part of this, this application or not? Is that name familiar?
The, the name does not sound familiar, but as you were speaking, I was, I was going to pull up the, um, application and see if she, um, is any of the names that are here. Will Gindi?
Jamie Chancellor is the only name I have, is the only name I have that's not.
No, sir. I do not have that name on the application.
Okay.
And we, in the email that we, um, sent to him, it was very specific, please provide us with the information on who will be speaking, or if you are to give us, how you will show up and go to webinar. Please provide us with the information on who will be speaking or if you are to give us how you will show up and go to webinar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, how does the council feel about this? I'd like to have this applicant come and talk to us at the next reading. What do you guys think about that? This is a complex issue and clearly none of us are qualified and we put Bradford on the spot trying to give as much information as you can about what's actually happening here. I think some of the questions that Selena brought up, a very important valid question, and I'm sure there may be more, but my thinking is I'd like to, Bradford and Ray, I'd like to sit down.
Mayor, if I could jump in here? If I could jump in here real quick. I just received an email from Lauren, my assistant here. And she says, hey, Nelson Sada is texting me. He says he's there, but you guys can't hear him.
Okay, did he raise his hand?
What name is he under?
Mr.
Then he must be the Jamie Chancellor that I was talking about. He's self-muted then. He just needs to unmute himself.
I texted her back. She should be responding shortly.
If I could make one comment while we're waiting. The purpose of this action, though, is, if I understand it correctly, to provide a definition in the ordinance. This is not a business specific at this point in time on both sides.
They're opening up, they're going to be opening up soon as this thing is approved.
But we, it's a special exception, so don't we have to go through another?
Well, we have a second reading, yeah.
No, that's not what I mean.
I mean, is there other actors? There may be, but I think it's, I think.
I'm with you. It's just another thought that I had that this is definitional and I certainly wouldn't argue that I'm not well-equipped to be able to know whether it covers everything properly or not.
Any luck with that, Ray?
They have their hand raised. They need to unmute themselves. They are self-muted.
I will send that.
Bradford, tell the person who texts you to text them to tell them they have to unselfmute.
Got it. Got to improvise sometimes.
It's a game of telephone. What message do you think they'll get at the end?
Log off.
I'd like a double cheeseburger, please.
Do I just one? That'll be the end. Dodgers win.
That he is unmuted.
He says he's unmuted. Well, something's not working.
What name is he under, did he say?
Nelson Sada. What was the individual's name that you had mentioned, Ray?
Jamie Chancellor. Bradford, I only have six people under attendees, and that is not one of the names.
Ray, I texted Lauren and I said, is it Jamie Chancellor by chance? And now the answer is yes. So he thought it's Sada, now it's Jamie Chancellor, so let's maybe try Jamie Chancellor and see if we can.
They need to unmute themselves. They are self-muted.
Need to unmute.
Hey, this is Jamie Chancellor. I'm the captioner. I'm not, I'm not associated with this in any way. I'm just the captioner for the TV. And if I raised my hand, it was mistaken. Sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie. You did put your hand down, though.
Okay, so I guess we could, where we're at is we don't have a representative for the applicant available. As I said, could you extend our invitation, please, Bradford, for whatever, you have a second reading. Would that be at the next council meeting, Ray?
Yes, sir.
Assuming it's approved tonight? Okay. It would be good, it would be good if we could just have someone representing that can answer some of the questions that have been raised and questions that haven't even been answered yet.
And Mayor, this is Keith, if I could jump in, just to let, keep in mind, if you proceed tonight on first reading, your ability to make changes to this document becomes severely limited at second reading. So I don't know if there will be any changes based on the council's thought process, but it's much easier to make changes at first reading than at second reading.
So are you suggesting perhaps that we can table it this evening?
In my view, that would be the safe way to proceed because that protects your ability to make make any kind of real substantive edits without having to start the process over again.
Okay, well, all right, I agree with your recommendation, Keith. My question is, in doing so, would we create any significant timeline impacts for the applicant?
I don't know. That, I don't know if the applicant has deadlines.
If I could jump in here, please.
Yes.
This, we are creating a text or we are doing a text amendment to create a special exception use approval. We have informed the applicant that he needed to do a special exception approval application into our offices early on in this, the whole, before this started or when this started. We have not received a special exception application. So as far as timeline is concerned, before they're able to open up their doors, they will have to have a special exception approval, which will take anywhere from, we've done them as fast as three months. So that's something to consider. So if you're tabling this, you may not be affecting that bottom line as far as a special exception approval.
Okay, I'll translate that to say that the official clock hasn't started yet. Okay.
Is it possible, since we're having technical difficulty getting a hold of the applicant, to table it to the end of the agenda?
No.
Okay.
This is the end of the agenda.
Okay, may I jump in here again?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just, I received a chat message from Rena, and it says, if he joined by phone only, he will not be able to be heard. And I was texting, then I went to text message Lauren, and he said that, the applicant said that he was on a phone.
Okay. Keith, to table it, I need to get a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Okay, based on the discussion we've had and where we are with this, and I think there are many questions, we really, I think, deserve to have an opportunity to have them addressed, not only for us, though, for our citizens as well who are maybe watching this. So with that in mind, I look for a motion to table this item, the item number R four.
And Mayor, the motion, if we can do a time certain.
I was going to say time suggest.
Yes, please.
Time certain tabling for our next regular council meeting. At which time, at which time we anticipate having the applicant here.
Do you want me to include all of that? I make a motion to table regular agenda item number three until the next council meeting when the applicant will be present.
Second.
For the record, that's November nineteenth.
Is that our next meeting? Yes, it is. The nineteenth. What's that, the week before Thanksgiving?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that the council, five zero vote, table this item, agenda item R three until the next regular council meeting on the nineteenth of November.
Yes, Mayor.
With that, we have agenda item R four, which is a public hearing for approval of an application number two zero dash nine one. An application by the NRI Institute of Health Sciences in the adoption of revolution number two zero dash two three, confirming our council action. The applicant is seeking a modification to council imposed condition for a previously approved business trade or vocational school to allow such use to expand into building three B directly east of the current location. The use is located at the northeast corner of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard and Southern Boulevard and situated within Royal Palm Beach Plaza Shopping Center and Royal Commerce Park. And it was submitted by Mr. Dan Slane. This is a quasi judicial process of And who do we have that's going to be testifying on this? Bradford, are you going to be testifying?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? All right, if you'll both please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm under penalties of perjury your testimony to the village council will be open to the truth?
Yes.
And back to council, any ex parte discussions that any of you have had regarding this item would need to be disclosed on the record at this time.
I had one brief conversation with Mr. Slane.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else? Thank you, Mayor. Then we can proceed with the item. All right, someone, someone has got their mic open and there's a lot of background noise. I don't know who that is. If you know who you are, please help us.
Diane, I believe that's you.
Is that me?
I believe so. So I'll start my presentation.
Go ahead, Bradford.
The applicant is requesting site plan, I'm sorry, a MCIC to increase the square footage previously permitted by resolution seventeen thirty-nine, specifically condition one development order. The applicant is requesting to modify the council imposed condition to allow for a one thousand seven hundred square foot increase into occupy suites five thirty-eight and five fifty-four, just to the east of where they currently occupy the building next to it, bring the total square footage of the NRI Institute of Health Sciences to nine thousand eight hundred ninety-two square feet. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this application, and staff is recommending approval of this application.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to make any comments?
Yes, Mayor. We are seeking to increase the space that is utilized for school purposes in part to be more better positioned to deal with social distancing and other requirements resulting from the coronavirus pandemic, and also to accommodate a new program in medical assistance that we will be offering beginning in January, which would be our third program, supplementing the associate of and the associate of applied science and diagnostic. There will not be any increase above any of the limits previously imposed by council in twenty twelve and twenty seventeen number of students, no additional demand for part. I think to the outside, no one would really see much change as a result of this modification.
Okay, thank you, sir. Diane, do we have any prior public comments?
No, Mayor, we do not.
R four. Ray, do you have anyone out there who would like to comment on agenda item R four?
No, I do not.
Okay, and with that, then I'll open it up for council. Any comments from the council, questions from the council? If there are none, then I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item number four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R four was approved five zero.
Yes, Mayor.
Good luck to the institute. We hope you guys continue to prosper.
Thank you very much. The village has done a great job for us and we appreciate paying a part.
Okay, thank you. All right, agenda item R five is appointment of one resident to the education advisory board. I believe that would be.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The agenda item actually is a copy of the application of the individual who is Denise Lawrence to actually occupy the alternate seat. And I think it's pretty self-explanatory. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Denise Lawrence to the alternate seat on the education advisory board with the term ending March twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R five was approved five zero.
Yes, Mayor.
I think we've already indicated our next meeting is the nineteenth of November. This is the last reminder mentioned earlier by Councilman Valentes. We do have an election coming up in the next few weeks, and by the time we meet again, we'll see where we are. The outcome of that election, but please, everyone, please go and exercise your right and privilege to vote the way you think you need to vote for this election. That's the key. With that, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just follow up on that. Today, there was an article about a fleet of vans that have been rented by the supervisor of elections for the purpose of kind of providing a mobile drop box.
Right. Mail ballots.
For mail ballots. Going to be one at each of the seventeen early voting locations, and then there are going to be seven more. Well, one of those seven is going to be located here on this property, which will make it really convenient for anybody who wants to take a mail ballot and drop it out of drop box. You don't even have to go over to Wellington Library or down to supervisor of elections office, although we want it located here, so.
That's excellent. Excellent. We need to get the word out to the residents about that, right? I don't know how, maybe we can post, can we post it on the boards? Yeah, whatever we can do to get the message out.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you very much for that update. All right, if there are no further updates or questions or comments, thank you all for coming. We stand adjourned.